All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the May 5th, 2020 Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee at, let's see, 5:01 PM. My name is Ann Hovey and I'm Chair of the DSRSC. This open meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. For this meeting, the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee is convening via Zoom app as posted. Information on how to join our school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website and on town calendars. Please note, the meeting is being recorded and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For public comment, public community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, about two to three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made as possible. For community comments, please virtually raise your hand and wait to be called on. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and street address. Community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to members of the community. It's not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we'll move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. We invite everyone to stay and listen to the entire meeting, but also understand you may not be able to do so and you may leave the Zoom call at any time. We appreciate that you've taken the time to participate in this most important process and encourage you to reach out to your school committee reps at any time. And a quick reminder to the school committee members, please remember to virtually raise your hand when you'd like to, when you'd like to speak and always begin by stating your name.
Ann, can I add one thing?
Yes.
It's Andrew. So the chat feature has been disabled, so they can't really virtually raise their hand unless they use the reactions such as that.
No, you can raise, if you're in under participants, like I see right now, I have, I see the list of participants and my.
In participants, okay, sorry, you're right. Yeah. Okay, my mistake.
No worries. I appreciate you bringing that up because if that had been the case, that would have been a problem.
Ann, also to the extent, we're going to be seeing your big picture a lot. I don't know if it's another cap on your computer, but your, your monitor shaking.
Oh, sorry, that's, that's me. I.
Yeah, that is you.
Yep, that's me. Sorry about that. You can also not put me on big. I'd appreciate if you didn't. In fact, I just see lots of little boxes. So maybe that's an option and y'all can try that. Before we get on to the rest of the business of the meeting, I'd like to say a few quick words. All right. And this has been looked at by all the members of the school committee. As has been said over and over again, we're in uncharted territory. It's really challenging for everyone in a myriad of ways. People are used to see, we're, people we're used to seeing every day are facing difficulties and obstacles about which we may not even be aware. We are all in uncharted territory, many of us facing monumental, potentially life-changing circumstances, and most of us are under an inordinate amount of stress. But even in this time of adversity, in fact, because of this time of adversity, it's important to remember that we are all trying to do the best we can. In terms of our school district, we're all trying to do the best we can for our students. We may not always agree and that's okay, but what we disagree about are the details. We all agree that the common goal is do the best that we can for our students, our teachers, our district and our community. Thank you to the many parents who have taken on a much greater role in their child's education and who have reached out to support others as we learn about blended learning together. The community's support during this time has been truly incredible. Thank you to administrators, staff and everyone else who have gone above and beyond to make sure the district keeps running smoothly and that our students and families are safe and provided for during the crisis. You may be behind the scenes, but your efforts are valued and appreciated. Most importantly, this is teacher, National Teacher Appreciation Week. At this time, I'd like to express a heartfelt thanks to all our children's teachers who are taking on new challenges to teach and more importantly, to connect with our students. You are truly the heart of this school and we appreciate all that you do. You are respected, you are loved and we are grateful for all that you do, this week and every week. The cliched phrase that it takes the village to raise a child is particularly relevant right now. As this crisis enters each new phase, let's continue to work together to support each other in our efforts to do the best we can for our students and for our teachers and for each other. Thank you. All right, now to community comments. Are there any community comments? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Double check. All right. So no, all right. Moving on then, we're going to go to reports and let's start with Mr. John Smith.
There we go. Thank you, Ms. Hovey and members of the regional school committee, and thank you for your kind words. And I also want to pass along my sincere thank you and gratitude to the regional school committee for your support of our educators, administrators and everybody. I wrote in my reflections that I am truly grateful to work in such a supportive community and a caring community and that does not go unnoticed. And so a thank you. We have been, you know, really busy at the high school in a, in a completely different manner than what we're accustomed. We are now in our phase three of remote learning where we are looking at, you know, streamlining communication and really focusing in on the power standards as Ms. McCoy has guided us through looking at Desi's recommendations. And those power standards are the key components that our students will need to know, not just content, but skill-based that they'll need to know moving into their next set of courses. For our seniors, they only have a few short weeks. I'm very pleased to say we were still able to have senior projects, which is great. We had about 48 students still participating, some of which were able to do their original idea because it did involve social distancing. Thank you to a number of staff members who came up with other proposal ideas. We actually have four students working on end of year returning of books and supplies and materials. So a kind of a great problem-solving portrait of a graduate. We have others who are looking at things such as paying collegiate athletes, the pros and cons of that. We have some students who are doing some PSAs for on e-cigarettes and the dangers of the electronic tobacco industry. And they'll be doing promotions. So I did want to give a shout out to Ms. Clancy and to Ms. Bishop, who in addition to their teaching responsibilities have really taken the lead in this. And for all of those mentors who continue to allow our seniors to have that senior project experience. Clearly, our seniors are the ones that we feel the worst for. They are the ones who are missing out on some end-of-year activities and some big things. That being said, Ms. Keegan and I and the faculty and Dr. Kio and Ms. McCoy, we are determined to do something really nice for the seniors. So we are continuing to communicate with seniors. I've had several Zooms. We put out a survey for all of our seniors to gather some ideas as to what they would like to see in a graduation. I've been very honest with them and have told them that, you know, it's not going to be the traditional graduation that we have seen in past years, but that doesn't mean we can't do something special. I think we want to take it beyond just a virtual graduation. I think we want to try to do something that involves our campus. Nothing is set in stone yet and we're even be willing to consider pushing things off later into June with the hope of some restrictions being eased a bit and for us to be able to look at some different options of what we can do. Obviously, before any decisions are made, we will bring forth proposals to the superintendent of schools and the regional school committee for your review and approval. But we still want to ensure that our seniors are sent off as they should be and congratulated. On top of that, we are still planning on submitting senior awards to students as we are for junior book awards. I think our underclassmen awards, we obviously won't be having a large ceremony, but we still are working with teachers to acknowledge those underclassmen and the work that they've done in their specific classes. Probably acknowledgement through a letter and then when students do return next fall, they could receive the certificate. We thought it was important to still acknowledge them this year while it's still fresh and also as an opportunity for those students who do receive awards, something that they can be putting into their resumes and their activity files for their college applications. So between the graduation, senior awards, looking at some underclassmen pieces, and then also having our eye to the future, we'll be working with Scott Kellett and the eighth graders in ensuring that there's a transition plan for students will be joining us in the fall in some shape or form. I am in contact with the peer leaders who typically are the ones who run the orientation program on top of guidance. So a lot of balls in the air, still a lot of things to be determined and a lot of things will depend upon our local boards of health, our Department of Public Health, governor's orders, obviously the regional school committee and the superintendent's office. But please know that from a perspective of serving our seniors, we want to make sure that we do something that is nice and memorable and special so that they can be proud of, of their school and their system and their experience and then move on to greener pastures. That's it from me, Ms. Hovey.
Thank you. Can I just really quickly, if people haven't had a chance to look, go through the links that provided, that the guidance office provided, there's a lot of great info, especially for juniors about the college process. And if you know people who have expressed some anxiety about that, really informative. It's also worth a look just to see Mr. O'Meara's tie-dye t-shirt. But really, really informative. They have a, he has a conversation with like six or seven guidance admissions officers in colleges, what colleges are saying about the impact of COVID-19 on their transcripts, all of that really, really useful info.
Yeah. And if I may, Ms. Hovey, they are also conducting Zoom sessions for parents as we speak simultaneously to our meeting tonight.
Oh, okay, awesome. Thank you for that. And I'll ask you this about Mr., ask Mr. Kellett later. Maybe this, you've thought about this, but I know next month we're looking at the school improvement plans. And I was wondering if you have any thoughts about like some of the big topics that that will address?
Oh yeah, absolutely. So we had an excellent school council meeting yesterday and we know that for sure our focus areas, one will be with our new start time next year, the flex block and looking at the multiple purposes of that flex block, which would include academic support, academic organization, teacher connection, advisory, and in some cases, opportunities for some groups to meet, you know, to provide some peer leader work and world of difference work with some of our student population. So there will certainly be a goal. We have rough draft crafted now of the flex block and how that will be implemented for our students. Another one, another goal will center around our NEAS visit, which is coming up in October. It's a little, they're, they're, it may be subject to change on NEAS and I think we're ready to roll. But they did have a backlog because schools that they were expected to visit this spring, they obviously had to cancel. Mr. Kaplan, Ms. Donahue and I attended a Zoom webinar with Fran Kennedy from NEASC and were given sort of the overview. Ms. Vittori in the business office has already worked with me to secure hotel lodging and all of that. So we're in, we're in good shape there and our documents will be ready. It'll be probably more of a matter of will NEAS prioritize us coming in the fall? If not the fall, the spring. So to have a goal will still be important. And what's great about NEASC is a lot of their 2020 standards tie directly into the portrait of a graduate and some of the key indicators that we have there. So we're going to have a combined NEASC portrait or graduate goal that will address issues around portrait of a graduate, but also address the components of our strategic plan, which will be going into next year, another, another year. And then the, the last one that we're going to be looking at will be some additional work around cultural responsiveness, some continuation. We are having some conversations about will that just be something that we do instead of being another separate goal? So we're discussing that. And a great discussion that we had yesterday was around the concept of anticipating potential changes for next fall with our attendance and looking at some type of blended learning goal in case we do have to start school in a staggered or sort of a different paradigm. Those will be our, our areas of focus.
Mr. Smith, if I can add one, one item. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Ann, we can't hear you.
Sorry, you can, sorry. Can you just make sure that you get recognized? A, but be also state your name at the beginning.
Michael Jaffe. Thank you. The, the, the other thing that I, I would recommend to the group, to the, the SAC is to be mindful of potentially getting overwhelmed with the, the blended learning goal. And so maybe we would see something that's a little bit flexible. So it may be if there is a, an unusual learning environment next year, which is very possible, that one of those goals may end up getting pushed off to the following academic year and then the others would be reprioritized.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. That was really actually very, very helpful. I look forward to seeing those next month.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hovey.
Thank you. Mr. Kellett.
Good evening. How are you, Ms. Hovey and other members of the school committee? I want to reiterate what Mr. Smith said about our appreciation on behalf of Mr. Robleski, myself and the staff for all the support that both central office and this regional school committee has, has given us. It's, it is much appreciated and we can't thank you enough. In my, in our report, I, I tried to, I reached out to the team leaders and curriculum leaders and tried to give you a sense of what's being done to support students in the remote learning environment. So there's a number of things that are happening that I hope you have the opportunity to read about and if you have any questions, please ask. I did want to make sure that I mentioned our scholar leaders. NELMS, New England League of Middle Schools, did not have the Scholar Leader Dinner program this year and usually we're limited to two students. We had three students. Two students came, it was tied in the voting, so we are able to recognize three students this year and we're very pleased. There are a host of students in our eighth grade class who could have been chosen, but these three students stood out. They are Karina Scolar, William Goldman and Margaret Bowles. They're for leadership, community service and just being there for others. So congratulations to them. I wanted to mention the, Mr. Robleski and I have been working with music folks, Mr. Herman. We talked about him before the meeting even started and world language. And we, Mr. Robleski was able, using his, his skills from a past life, was able to put together a virtual presentation for the transition of fifth grade students to the middle school. And we shared that with both parents and students, fifth grade parents and students. And then last Friday, he and I had Q and A sessions after they had a chance to watch the presentations. We had Q and A sessions to allow them to ask us any questions that they, they might have. He is, he is now working on putting together a virtual tour of the middle school in Linkwood Commons so that we can share that with students as, as they won't be able to visit us when our eighth graders would have been in DC. I have to give a huge shout out to Kathy Malloy and Donna Bettigan, our eighth grade team leaders, all of our team leaders. But these two, on top of the blended learning, remote learning we're doing, they had, had to deal with getting straightened up, getting, getting straightened away the DC trip. And now they're, we had a call earlier today to talk about how we can recognize our eighth grade students as they exit the middle school. And, and we have some ideas on that and we'll be bringing those forward to Dr. Kio in the near future. If you haven't seen Kathy Malloy, her CAG is still up and running. If you haven't seen their virtual talent show, it is worth, it is worth a few minutes to, to click on that link at the end of our, our report. And I think that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kellett. I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked Mr. Smith, since we're going to be looking at the school improvement plan next month and you have a sneak preview for us of some of the big items that you think you'll be touching on.
Well, there's a host and one of the ones I have written in front of me is, is flexibility, which includes a number of things. That would be a blended learning environment and a possible hybrid schedule. And most importantly, in that as we hopefully return to school, is student wellness and, and being able to make sure that they're in a, in a good place to learn however our schedule is, is built. And that would include us looking at advisory and how we might incorporate that into H Block. I don't know if there'd be a possibility, and I haven't even talked to Mr. Smith about using some high school students to be part of that. It might be a way to blend the flex block. We also have to be, you know, we have, one of our big ones will be our one-to-one initiative with the Chromebooks, which fits nicely with the portrait of a graduate. And along with that would be, it's in our, in the handbook changes, is the mastery rubrics that the special subjects are looking to continue to pilot. And those fit really nicely with our, with our portrait of a graduate and our world language teachers are creating their own rubrics for, theirs will be more of a proficiency rubrics to assess students. So those, that's, that would be our maiden focuses.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for that. Questions, people question, Maggie?
Yeah. So my question is sort of to both John and Scott. And I think I just wanted to say first of all, a thank you and that's to all, all the school administrators and all the teachers, particularly around this idea of the phase three or phase last of the DS remote learning plans. I experienced this week, and I think a lot of families did, sort of an increased communication from my own child's teachers. I got, you know, an email from each of them, kind of really laying out what's going to be going on for the rest of the year. And I also understand that there are sort of more sort of live opportunities for kids to engage with their teachers. And I'm just wondering if either or both of you could just speak to that? Because I do think that that's something that families were asking for and it definitely came through loud and clear for, for this one family this weekend. And I'm hoping that maybe you could share a little bit with us because it definitely added some structure to our family life. That was awesome. So thank you. Any, anything that you could share with us about that?
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, Scott.
The middle school is, is going to continue with their, the Zoom check-ins that they have scheduled on a weekly basis. And those will be, the focus of those will be mostly to check in with the students and their wellbeing and also to do question and answer on, on material that they've been assigned and that the teachers have created either links or mini lessons for them to, to watch before undertaking the work that was assigned. And they're also looking to create more opportunities to do either individual Zooms with students to help them or to do extra help sessions where they could have a group of students in that, in that session.
Terrific.
So at the high school, Ms. Sharon, we have requested all faculty to reach out to families and to students and sort of reiterate what will be expected for this remaining phase, kind of an update, looking at those power standards, acknowledging, you know, the, the fact that come fall, we'll have to look and see, you know, are there some, some things that we do need to review or some things that we need to work through? In addition, we've also recommended for our advisors of different clubs and activities to increase their reach out. We feel as though our students are certainly craving that, but also I think are able to handle that. We, in some cases, some of our administration is doing something like that. I've been doing some Zooms with seniors and will continue doing those. Ms. Keegan is also doing some academic planning meetings that involve usually a teacher, Ms. Keegan, and then a member of guidance, especially if students are having some struggles or difficulties. And in those cases, we also involve the parent. So we're having kind of a virtual team meeting. And they don't necessarily have to be a special education student, it's just in general to sort of work through that. What's working for you? What's not working for you? How can we further support you? Kind of explaining the expectations. I've clarified with our student population, the expectations around attending the Zooms and knowing that there will be some times where they can't and all you have to do is just simply reach out to your teachers. You know, we had a conflict, a bunch of people on the same computer or whatever the case may be. Part of it is we just feel like that increased attendance will really help with engagement as well.
Well, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you and, and that's just also behalf on, on behalf of the community and some folks that weren't able to, you know, come to these meetings, but definitely are seeing that. And I know it takes a lot of work on the part of, you know, folks to be available at these times and it's a lot to juggle. So thank you and to all the different folks that all put in the work to make that roll out. Ms. McCoy, Dr. Kio and all the teams around you are really, really, we appreciate it. And we're hopeful that the next seven weeks are going to be a really thoughtful, fruitful time for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. Does anybody else have questions? Good? All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Smith and Mr. Kellett. We'll get back to you later in the agenda again. Actually, no, it's next. It's the next is the consideration of remote learning grading. So I would love to hear, John, do you want to go first?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. So we've spent a good bit of time sort of analyzing, you know, where we are with this. And, and we didn't move on it right away simply because we really didn't know if we'd be back in school. You know, we kind of had to wait based upon the, the governor and those sorts of decisions. So looking at the full picture, we, we essentially had a full semester one, a regular semester one with two quarters and a mid-year exam. And then we had six weeks of academic time of the 10 weeks of quarter three. And so we also wanted to ensure that that time was accounted for. Interestingly enough, when this process was going through and we were contemplating what to do, I received several emails, as did several teachers from students saying, you know, please find a way to include those six weeks into the grading piece. And don't just involve them all into quarter four because we, we want that to be given its due weight. So that was part of my thinking. We also examined a number of different models, similar to Dr. Kio and Ms. McCoy and Ms. Vittori. I have Java-like groups with other principals that I meet with once a week. And this was obviously a very hot topic to discuss, you know, how would we handle something like this? Under the regular system, we made an adjustment. Actually, we scaled back our mid-years and our finals. And the, each term is now worth about 22.5% as opposed to 20%. So we put more emphasis on the quarterly grades and less on the mid-years and finals. We batted around a number of different ones and came to the propose that you had, the proposal you have in front of you of looking at term one being, I mean, semester one being 72%. And that, what that incorporates is term one, term two in the mid-year exam. We based it on 36, 36% each with the mid-year being folded into, you know, those two terms, so about 72%. Term three would be 18%. Term three would be 18%, which would be a little bit over about half of what would be a regular quarter. And then term four would be 10%. And on face value, it looks as though, wow, okay, term, semester one's going to be really heavily weighted. It is going to be more heavily weighted, however, it does two different things. It does give us that opportunity to put forward grades when all resources were in place, teachers had academic support, students could access the learning center, you know, compensatory services were being conducted. It was sort of the real school picture. Term three had those six weeks, so we felt as though term three needed to be a little bit higher in weight than term four. What term four can do for students is actually give them a boost. So term four being 10% doesn't sound like a lot, yet students can get that full 10%. The majority, almost all of our students are going to get that 10%. And what that equates to is 100. And if you think about it, students probably in many of their courses are not receiving 100. They might be receiving a 93, a 94, a 95, maybe even a 96, 97. But to say that they're going to get 100 across the board on each of their courses within that 10% will help students who either A had a slower start to the year or struggled a little bit first semester. And it gives them a real boost. Our intention is to provide all students, as long as they engage in the work and complete the work, they're going to receive the 10%, the 100 points for that. As opposed to a student who, say, in a regular school year, you know, could have completed everything, took a test, maybe got an 82, you know, so it's going to be an all or none. And it sounds like, oh, what about the none? Well, we're working so that we don't have any students who are in that case. And that's where we're providing these academic planning meetings. We also are going to be allowing students in term three who had some makeup work. So let's say you were a student who was out, you had missed a quiz, you had missed a test or a project. We're going to give them a window of time to make that work up. And we're working individually with, once we have a, an approved grading program, our teachers will be working out to those students and explaining to them, okay, you did miss a test on such and such, where I'm going to work with you on that. Where they might translate it to a project-based assessment instead of a, a test. But they'll give them the opportunity to boost their grade for term three as well. So there's two different places where they can boost it. They can boost it within their term three, and they can also receive the full 100-point credit for term four. So that's what our proposal is. Most schools that are comparable schools, Wayland, Westwood, Wellesley, Wellesley is actually doing this exact one, are looking at the percentages of term one, term two in the mid-year being a little bit higher than the other ones, simply because it's the brick and mortar educational experience that we're accustomed to. I'd be happy to answer any questions or explain, you know, the process. I, I can tell you that we batted this around with guidance, with department chairs. We also sent it out to teachers for their feedback. And after working out a couple of things with Aspen, because we had to make sure that this would work with them, this is what the faculty would like to move forward with.
I ask a question?
Yeah, Lynn, go ahead.
Can you speak to what, what options you looked at and why you chose this approach over other options?
Yeah, because we, we, we looked at options that would certainly be like maybe a quarter three, quarter four, roll it into one and just have second half of the year repass fail. But the feedback from students was they wanted that work to count that they had done in term three. We also looked at percentages that would make third and fourth quarter a little closer than first and second quarter. But faculty felt and guidance felt as though the true educational experience and students having full access took place when they were in school.
Lynn, do you have further questions?
No, I think he answered them. Yep, you answered them.
Okay, Judy?
Yeah, this is just a point of information. Are you going to have finals this year?
We are not.
Okay. I, that's, that's good.
No finals.
Kate has her hand up. Yep, Kate.
Kate?
Yeah, we got it.
Sorry. Thank you. Um, thank you for explaining that. That was very helpful. And can you explain, I know the goal is to hopefully have everybody receiving the, the passing grade and 100% for the fourth quarter. But can you speak a little bit more to how you might be identifying kids who might present as though they're doing no work and, and how we can? I mean, I know we're a small district and the teachers are checking in through Zoom, but we don't really know what's going on in each home and some situations are really hard. Can you just speak a little bit to how you're hoping to identify those kids?
Absolutely. So as part of our GNA, which is Guidance Administration, and we meet twice a week, we have what's called an engagement tracker. It's an internal document that we use. Teachers at the end of each week are requested to provide input for any students who didn't complete work and to what that was. And to give us feedback, you know, each week if they had not, if it was just a matter of they didn't complete one thing and, you know, they reached out to that particular student, student's going to work on it. It was given a lower priority. Our top priority went to students who, we saw multiple cases where they did not engage with teachers across the board, across a bunch of their subjects. So that internal document is then used by the guidance department and administration to reach out and to have those academic planning meetings that I was talking about that Ms. Keegan set up. And so, for example, she has three tomorrow. And the goal in those cases is it's open-ended with kids. We're not saying that at the end of the week, you didn't complete that assignment, you can't do that assignment. You can still complete that assignment. And it's not being graded for a specific grade, it's being graded for completion. We've also said to some teachers, if a student didn't satisfactorily complete an assignment, give it back to them for revision and give them the opportunity with support to redo it so that they get the completion portion of it. Once again, it's not given as a grade. Couple of our AP teachers have given some mock grades, but that's more just to gauge where they might be prior to going into the exam. So that tracker has been very, very successful. The fact that we also meet twice a week on those GNAs and what we discuss are students who our teachers are reporting have not engaged. The guidance counselors actually reach out to the families. The teachers are also requested to not only email the student, but to email the parent if it's more than one time that they have not turned something in, just to make them aware. In some of the cases, kids, you know, there had been some, a variety of things, but some of it has been the student was telling mom or dad that they were doing the work and they were not. Or they were struggling with the delivery of how it was being done. And then we need to look at it a different way. And so we go back to the teacher to say, okay, I need you now to either give an alternative assignment or to explain a different way that that student can, can learn the material.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like that's very individualized for the students, which I think is great and, and one great thing about being such a small district.
Yep.
And especially now because, as you said, maybe someone's just not completing the assignments, but maybe they're working or caring for a grandparent or younger siblings. It, it, things are so different now than they normally are. So I, I appreciate everybody's efforts.
I would say guidance is, is involved with this in a much sooner, earlier process than they would if it were in the brick and mortar school environment. Simply because we know that there can be so many other factors involved because of what is taking place and because of the isolation and, and how it presents itself for different families.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Mr. Jaffe, excuse me, Mr. Jaffe?
Thanks, Ann. I, I have a number of questions, comments, and, and concerns, I guess, around the policy or the, the proposed policy. It's, thank you for, for putting it out. It's, it's obvious that there's a lot of thought put into how do we do the right thing? And how do we create a policy that seeks to strike a balance between the in-class learning and a portion weight based on the amount of, of content delivery? I, I did speak with a number of community members, parents, and, and collected some feedback, which for me helped frame some of, some of my considerations. And, and I'd like to get the indulgence to maybe kind of read from some of those to get a little bit of the flavor of the feedback that I received. Would that be okay? Okay, I'll just kind of go, go down a, a number of bullets. So the, the, the kind of the, the, the main messaging I received back was around, around doing right by, by students. And there's some concern around that. So some of the quotes, "Students have been promised over, over and over again that they will not be harmed." Another states, "Do no harm is a good mantra." And I think the proposed policy will end up doing harm to some students psychologically, if nothing else. A third said, "Do no harm should be the guiding principle." Another comment, I think the 72% weighting is a huge mistake. "Quarter should be equally weighted regardless of distant learning. Should not modify student expectations retroactively as it takes away student power." "Students should be able to decide between credit, no credit, or a grade based on 25% quarterly rating, rating at the end of the year." "Should create a policy that has less downside and addresses some of the proposed policy shortcomings." "An alternate policy could empower more students to stay engaged throughout the end of the school year." "If students feel that they can only increase their, their grades, their GPAs with additional effort and engagement, they may be encouraged to remain hopeful." "A lot of kids look at the third and fourth quarters as catch-up." "I know mine always have, especially when you factor in sports or drama production into the equation." "There should be an alternate to pass fail in order to motivate kids and keep them engaged." "This isn't just about getting through the year, it's also consistently developing study and engagement habits." "A lot of kids take a while to learn the teaching style and expectations of the teacher and how that is reflected in their grade." So that's kind of the flavor of, of, of some of the comments. I abbreviated those. I guess from, from my perspective, the, the lens that I've thought about the policy through, which I think is quite consequential for, for our, our students, is that it should be as equitable, flexible, and in the overall best interest of the students as, as possible. And when I was thinking about kind of unintended consequences, because it's very difficult to create a, a, a perfect policy. I, I think it's probably impossible in, with these circumstances and with the time constraints we have. I'm personally more interested in protecting potential student downside unintended consequences than protecting potent, against potential student unjust enrichment. And so kind of in, in some, I, I, I think the, the, the mantra or the overarching principle of, of do no harm and, and try to, to the maximum extent possible, create opportunities for students to achieve a, a great result that they may have been otherwise been able to achieve had we had a traditional year ought to be, ought to be the, the goal. And with the, the, the kind of binary 10%, either on or, or off, and the very heavy weighting, 72% first semester, I don't know that the proposed policy achieves that results, result. Particularly with students who are, for some reason or another, underperformed the first quarter or the first semester from their own perspectives. So whether it's some executive functioning challenges and ramping up, whether it's some maybe reprioritization that, that, that they needed to do and, and take up the rest of the year to catch up, they really don't have that, that opportunity under this, this proposal versus some potential alternatives.
Maggie?
Thank you. Maggie, Sharon, thank you, Mrs. Javier. Appreciate you recognizing me. I, I guess I, I want to speak in favor of the policy and I want to speak, first of all, because I know that it's taken our school administration and our guidance counselors a lot of time and thought and effort. And I do feel like, you know, not, not every, I, I checked in with six other school districts regarding, local school districts regarding their policy. But also, you know, in, in 30 surrounding districts, relatively few of those districts actually brought this policy to their school committees at all for approval and just moved it forward. So I want to offer thank you and respect to our school leadership for doing, for doing us this courtesy and giving us the opportunity to opine on it. But I, I have a few reasons that I support it. First of all, I think that the fact that it is in alignment with and comparable to other districts with which we compare ourselves is important. Because while a district in another region or another type of school district might have a different thing, our students are being compared to other like school districts in Boston in terms of what they do after graduation. So I think staying in concert with them is important. I think asking our teachers to provide letter grades for the kind of work they're assigning is an unreasonable burden that we're putting on them at this point. Because the work is not being designed with like the rubric for all of the letter grades. And therefore, to ask them to do it that way is, is really hard and unfair. And we don't know when kids work at home, what kind of advantages they have. So we don't know when a kid turns in a project whose mom is able to help them and who has to do the project on their own. And I think asking for teachers to figure out something about that is, is not fair to the teacher and probably also not fair to other students. And, and I think that it also speaks to different, yes, some students have the capability right now to really knock it out of the park. They have their own room, they have a great internet connection, they don't have other things that they're being expected to do at home. But that's not a fair reason to give a kid an A versus another kid who wishes they could get an A, but actually their parents are both working and they're in charge of their three or four younger siblings. And so it's not a fair time to give kids that opportunity to get ahead, because not everyone can get ahead. And lastly, I think the matter of how we grade is truly a no-win situation for school committees, for school leaders, for all of us. There isn't going to be any solution that anyone will put forward that everyone's going to say, yay, you, you nailed the whole thing. I, I think you guys did a reasonable, thoughtful and reflective job, and I will support this proposal.
Lynn, can I ask a clarifying question? Is, was, was the, is, had any, was what Michael suggested? Michael, were you suggesting that teachers assign letter grades?
Well, I, I haven't suggested an, an alternative. I, I, I have sent an alternative that was, that, that I would suggest that would entail, and I could, I can, I can talk about that now. But it would entail, essentially, the, the, the policy is based on, what I had sent out is based on the, what Denver, Colorado adopted. After they did a, a credit, no credit for the remote learning time and the community and students were quite dissatisfied, so they reversed course. And so essentially, what they put forward is that there, there would be a letter grade assigned for each student at the time that they, that learning went remote. And at that point in time, from that point in time to the end of the year, that student's grade could not go down unless the student was without, you know, good reason. grade could not go down unless the student was without, you know, good reason, that Mr. Smith was talking about earlier, was completely disengaged. Their grade would not go down from the in-class learning point, but they would have full opportunity during the remote learning time to improve upon their grade with an apportionment of grades being 25% per quarter. So it's a no-down, but yes, could improve. And then at the end of the year, on a class-by-class basis, the students could select a credit, no credit with a COVID-19, you know, notation noted on the transcript. And there, the overarching guidance is give that every opportunity to do no harm and to allow flexibility to students.
Maggie?
Again, I feel like a policy such as that, first of all, we have seven weeks of school left. I 100% believe and trust that our school leadership is going to come up with a game plan for future times when we close that will involve sort of a more in-depth and sort of thinking ahead about all the possible contingencies if we go remote. But for this year, I think that we, saying do no harm, but then giving some opportunity for students who have all the advantages to get ahead, isn't do no harm. It's harming people who don't have the opportunity to get ahead. And the people who do have the opportunity to use this time to get ahead are people who don't have other responsibilities, who aren't suffering from mental health trauma, who don't have, who have parents that are available to kind of help them out. And that's not fair to me. I'm just going to stop here. I am happy if we move this to a vote.
Kate, and then Judy.
Thanks. I just want to say that I share Maggie's concerns that while I recognize that this Denver plan is trying to be more flexible and allow kids a choice during this situation, and I understand that side of it, I think though unintentionally, what I fear is that kids, to Maggie's point, kids who have their own room, have a good laptop, have good access to Wi-Fi, don't have other responsibilities, and kids who are already self-starters might really take off with that opportunity. On the other hand, kids who are dealing with a whole host of things that we might not, never know, probably don't have the wherewithal to do that and don't have the in-school support that they, that might be required for them to do well, even in a normal learning situation. I understand they can virtually see their teachers and ask for help, but I just fear that this would further divide the people who are already doing well and the people who are already struggling.
This is Lynn again.
No, Lynn, Judy was the next, and then you can go, okay? Thanks.
Judy Miller. I also agree with what Maggie says. I just have one question. You sort of alluded to this, John, at the beginning. How'd you come up with the 72% number? It just struck me as like, like I think maybe Jim Burudi sat down and like ran a million models and then you came up with this number. I just, I just wonder how you figured out that that was the right, and I'm not questioning it, I'm just point of information.
No, Judy, it's an excellent question, and it did in fact, the original model came through math, absolutely, so you're spot on. And it had to do with the number of weeks, calculating the number of weeks of in-school as opposed to virtual learning. That's where the 72, you could break it down into 36, 36. And I know that for some people, when they saw the 72, they thought, whoa, that just seems high. You know, obviously semester one, semester two in a given year would be 50. But we feel like it's apples and oranges. We feel like while we are instructing in-school with all the supports and to the best of our ability, the level playing field, we do feel like in this remote learning, it is not. And we're doing our very best on our end not to have those things happen, but we just know that different family situations are different. And that's why we came up with those percentages.
Lynn?
So I think these last two rounds of discussion sort of put a finer point on my question to Mr. Smith, because I think this conversation around the Denver plan versus our plan, I think that, to the extent that we're being asked to approve the plan, that's the kind of information I want to know as far as why we chose the plan we chose. I agree with Maggie that this is completely the, you know, within the realm of the administration. I don't know the first thing about, you know, how best to motivate students. And I frankly don't even understand what Kate just said about how, you know, how one plan can disadvantage certain kids and advantage other kids. And so to the extent that I'm being asked to approve a grading policy, I don't feel like I have the information to just even understand what, why it is this is the best for our kids. I trust that it's the best for our kids, but if I'm being asked to approve it, I'd like to understand why, why we decided this is the best for our kids.
John, do you have thoughts about that?
Yeah, when we discussed this with department chairs, you know, we felt as though, in fairness, there needed to be greater weight given to the first semester and the third quarter as opposed to the remote learning, because we did feel like it was apples and oranges. Yet we also felt like there should be, you know, what's going to be the incentive for students to be engaged during this remote learning? And that incentive was that 10%, which they can maximize. So we also had guidance take a look at this from a GPA standpoint, you know? And Rob Williamson, who's sort of our math guru on the guidance department, said, if students receive that 10%, they will receive a boost in their overall grade. Now, to Mr. Jaffe's point, he's right. If they struggled in the first semester, then yeah, well, that may have a limited impact on how much of a boost that's going to be. That would be the case in a regular scenario for a student, a full-year English course, let's say. Say you had a slow start in that first semester, you know, Mr. Jaffe's absolutely right, some students then can catch up. That's just an unknown. We don't know. We can't, we can't determine if that would have happened or would not have happened. So to the best of our ability, we're trying to use what did happen when we were in school and alter the weight of that a bit because that's cleaner, or more efficient, or tells a true story. And then, but still gives students opportunity for some boost in that 10% at the end of the year so that we're not asking them to be A-students. We're asking them to be engaged. We're asking them to complete assignments. We're asking them to do the best they can with this remote learning. And I think that's what our philosophy was. You know, Ms. Keegan and I want nothing more than opportunities where students can get a boost. I mean, that's why I changed the mid-year and the final percentage last year. I felt like mid-years and finals are important, but I felt like the weight of them was too much, frankly. And it was taking away from the work that kids were doing all throughout the quarter, and it was erasing some of that. So what we're looking at here is, it's a little bit of an unknown. So, you know, how would they have done had we been in school fourth quarter? I don't know. I can't say for sure. And so I can only go on what we know did take place and what we have a record of. And then how can we find a way to still provide some engagement for kids and a potential, you know, boost at the end for them, albeit, for some kids, it's going to be a little bit more than others depending upon how they did earlier. And I recognize that, and we really couldn't find anything else. And I know that people were adamant that because we were not grading, there was no way that quarter four could be anything like a regular quarter.
Dr. Kio?
Thank you, and everyone, actually. The conversation's an important one. And obviously, in a system like ours, you know, grades matter, people pay attention. And having been through conversations in other school systems about weighting, and it was a debate over whether we should unweight the GPA in order to level the playing field, most of us have been around in education for a while, have seen systems who have that debate, and it goes around and round and round and round. It's so difficult to, because there's always kind of a flip side, right? Who gets impacted in a negative way, who gets impacted in a positive way? And I agree, Lynn, that this is, this is one of those things where, you know, school committees, school committees may in fact not even be debating this. We felt that it should come to the school committee because it is in fact a program of studies issue, which you guys approved ultimately. So, you know, if we were going to be doing it for the year, we knew it was coming for next year, we would want something speaking to it in the program of studies. We don't have that luxury. But I think what's really important to keep in mind during this process are, there's a few things. Number one, the colleges that, the colleges that will be accepting our students could look dramatically different in the future. It was a recent article out saying that many, many colleges will not be able to withstand the potential withdrawal of students, families pulling their kids out because they're not willing to pay 60 to 70 or more thousand dollars a year for a remote learning online experience. The colleges are under tremendous pressure. And I think that people sometimes forget that they have to adapt to the situation. Every single school system could potentially have their own way of grading. And if they do, then there's a real possibility that a kid coming from Wayland compared to a kid coming from LS might have a completely different-looking set of grades due to this crisis. So they, just as they do when they look at GPAs, because every school weights them differently, they're just going to have to give the kids a mulligan for this section. And I think when, in listening to John's team when they were debating this, it was a really healthy debate. And I'm not saying that they have the perfect answer, because I'm not sure there is one. But it was a healthy debate that his team, I was just lucky enough to be in that particular meeting. They went back and forth, and I appreciated the amount of time and energy that they put into it. And after all, they work most closely with our kids, and I do trust them on this decision. And I get what you're saying, Michael, that there's, there are other ways of looking at this. There's no question about it. But the other thing that I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of is this, and I'll try and keep it quick. What about the learning? It's not just about the grades. What about the learning? Okay, we have been having countless debates for the past three years within the administration about trying to focus on the learning as opposed to, you know, breaking up with the grades and falling in love with the learning. And I actually believe there's been some really meaningful learning taking place during this disastrous situation. I think, you know, the debate that we had last week, the last, yes, last week, the joint meeting about, you know, how do we know it's having, what kind of impact it's having? It's a great question and probably won't know until after. But I'm confident that in fact, what we've heard is that some kids are actually going to do very well in this situation. I see kids, you know, I've had people say, you know, kids are traumatized, and there are some, no question about it, because some home situations are, well, they're all different, right? Everybody's home situation is different. But some kids are really, they're doing the kinds of things that we thought weren't that important growing up, like going down to the ballfield to make pickup games, or riding our bicycles in the woods and building forts and all that kind of stuff. We thought that wasn't important. And in retrospect, now we're trying to push back. There's a big push to get kids doing more of that stuff, and we have a lot of kids doing that. So I'll be curious to see whether or not our kids suffer dramatically in terms of their achievement throughout this thing. So I think it's right to support John and Scott's following with the same structure, to support them in this recommendation, and to continue to keep our focus on keeping our learning as meaningful as possible through this unfortunate situation that may in fact extend in some form into the fall.
Thank you, Dr. Kio. I would see, I think feel like we've had a really rich discussion and debate. I'd like to see, just by show of hands, if people are ready to move for a vote. It's just a straw poll. It's not whether you vote yes or no, whether you're ready to move to a vote. All right, one, three, four. All right, so can I, if everyone could get off mute, all the school committee people can get off mute? Do I hear a motion to accept the high school's grading policy? For the 20, 19, 20 school year, end of the 1920 school year, yeah?
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Judy Miller, second.
All those in favor?
Discussion?
Okay, discussion. We've had discussion, but do you have another quick point?
I think that's a formal part of the...
No, you're right. It is, yes, you're right.
So I would like to pose the question, and I'm not intending to be confrontational, so excuse me if it comes across that way, but I would, I would ask leadership, what is the response from a parent who, who I believe rightfully, because I've heard it, who says students have been promised over, over, and over again that they will not be harmed, and they are very typically, year over year, throughout their DS experience, slow starters, and they've been able to compensate over second, third, and fourth quarter, or over third and fourth quarter, where now they can't because retroactively, the policy is being changed on those kids? What do you say to them?
I mean, honestly, and this is school committee discussion, so honestly, what I would say to that, and, you know, my own trial...
Actually, I'm more interested in what the, because this is a question that gets asked to the administrators, it doesn't get asked to school committee members.
So, all right, I defer, but I feel like who's, the discussion is between us, I think, before we vote.
Yeah, I think, I think Maggie should be able to respond, because I do agree that discussion, and we'll see.
I mean, I think, I think you respond, I don't think that people are being harmed. They're getting credit for all the work they did first and second trimester, they're getting credit first semester, quarter, or whatever, they're getting credit for the work that they did third, they're moving into remote learning for that last quarter, and they have the opportunity to earn 100. And for me, that's not harm. I mean, I am the absolute parent of a child who starts every year, kind of phoning it in and says, oh, don't worry, I'm going to catch up in third and fourth quarter. In my personal child's life, this is a moment of learning, and it's the adage, why wait till tomorrow what you could do today? So, I mean, I think that this is also one of those things, that this is a national health pandemic, and while I feel for any child who is incrementally not benefited as much as they might be had we not had the pandemic, I also have to say, like, there's a lot of people losing a lot of things. And this, for me, I feel like this is one of the more fairer ways we could handle this. But...
Okay, yeah, Judy?
Yeah, I, I, Michael, I hear what you're saying. I feel for those kids. But I guess my two points are, it's clear to me that the leadership at the high school did a really thorough job of figuring out what would be an equitable way to do this. And I am not an educator, I am a lawyer, and so I'm not that qualified to, I am not nearly as qualified as Mr. Smith and Mr. Kellit and Dr. Kio. And the second point, actually, three points. The second point is, any system that you put into place is going to be unfair... is going to be unfair to some, okay? And then the third point is, there are, is, follows on what Maggie was saying. There's so much awful, there's, there's so much awfulness going on right now that grades, to me, if, 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 if John and Scott and Andrew think this is good, let's just go with it, because there are so many more gravely important things to focus on. You know?
Thank you, Michael and Maggie and Judy. I'd just like to really quickly say that I, one of the things that really struck me that John said earlier was, he was talking about the equity of access that existed in the earlier quarters that doesn't exist now. And so I feel like there's equity, that that's where the equity is coming in. And that's, I think, something that's really important to say, to, to be aware of. But I do hear your points, Michael and, and Lynn. I'm going to propose that we move to vote, and we'll see where it lands. Understanding, like everyone has been saying, that there's, there's no perfect solution. The original grading that we had before wasn't perfect either. And now, as Maggie keeps saying, we're building the plane while we're flying. So, you know, this was, I think this was a really good solution, given the circumstances, personally. But I'm going to ask then if we can see, we'll go to a vote, we've got a motion, we've got a second. All those in favor? Maggie, we'll do roll call.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Actually, it's not in favor, so we'll have a vote, roll call. Maggie, sorry.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Thank you. Michael?
Michael Jaffe, no.
Okay, thank you. Lynn Collins, Lynn?
Lynn Collins, no.
Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Okay, and Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Smith and to your team. And thank you for the really rich discussion, because I feel like that even moving forward, some of the things that we were talking about today will be taken into consideration and may help inform what happens in the future, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
We're going to move over to Scott and the middle school grading plan, please. You had unmute yourself.
Unmute.
Done.
Or get off of it? All right, well, while he's getting himself back on, oh, there you are, okay.
Ours, ours follows suit with the high schools. We, we, we had a lot of discussions about whether we should just go pass fail for third and fourth quarter, and even if we should do final grades. However, you know, given the communities we live in, we, we recognize that the, some students might need those grades if they're, they're looking to go to private school or elsewhere. And also, we wanted to give students credit for what they've done already and when they were in the brick and mortar in the, in the school. And the same, same idea that, that students, there's not a level playing field on the remote learning. We have a number of students that have, you know, that are faced with a number of challenges in, in participating in remote learning. We have, our teachers are aware. We will not count, our, our eighth grade students take a mid-year in mathematics, and that's not going to factor into, as percentage-wise for their grades. However, I, I, having dialogue with the three eighth grade teachers about looking at those scores, and if it has a positive impact on its student's grade, we definitely want to see that reflected. Like, given that it's a mid-year exam, and middle school student hasn't had a lot of experience with that type of assessment, I don't want to see it penalize the student in any way, shape, or form. So we, we decided to adopt what the high school is doing for consistency's sake. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Does, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, more of a, a, a comment. One of the, the parents I spoke with is a parent of a middle school student who expressed to me that their child is putting in more work and more effort than they've ever done before. And, and regret around that not being, the, the effort, the engagement, the resiliency, and the grit not being recognized. And so I, I would have the same concerns about the middle school policy. And I think the, the balance of the school committee feels like we've spoken enough about the issue. So I'll say no more than that.
Okay, anybody else have questions or comments? Maggie?
I mean, I feel generally speaking, the way that I feel about the high school, I, I do, and, and I don't feel strongly enough about it to really say more than, I, I'm not entirely sure that we need such a, I, I'm not sure that just because the high school's doing it is the right reason for the middle school. And I'm curious about whether or not we really need these final grades on the end of kids' transcripts. But on the other hand, I, I hear Mr. Jaffe's point about wanting to make sure to recognize kids' work in speaking with middle school families in particular. I, I think middle school families have very much, they are feeling, for many of them, that the work is complex, that it's involved, it's taking a lot of work to get it done. I think that's a double-edged sword in terms of, but, but I, I do hope that what children are getting back at the middle school is thoughtful feedback, and that they are getting enough support to get this work done. And, and I'm hoping that as we move forward, that that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? All right, should we move to accept? Can I hear a motion to accept the updated grading policy for the middle school for the nineteen twenty school year?
So moved.
Potter, so moved.
So Kate moved. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Judy Miller, second. All right, discussion? All right, Maggie, we're going to vote. Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, no.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, no.
Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. All right, thanks, thank you. Gentlemen, I appreciate that, and once again, thank you to your teams. I know that that was a lot of work, and that was really important work. I think something to keep in mind, as has been mentioned several times, is that the likelihood of us having to go back to some sort of remote learning in the future, there's certainly the possibility. So once again, everything that we learn here, discuss, will help inform those future policies. So it's all important. All right, thank you. And now, Dawn?
Yes.
Yes.
So although I feel like we've met a lot, this is actually our first opportunity to share updated financials with you since your March meeting. So your financials in your packet were as of April thirtieth. And I do have, obviously, with all the things that have been going on, some updated information to share. It's not just a boring same as last month. So on the revenue side, a couple of things. One is, as we know with the closure of school beginning for us as of March thirteenth, and not returning the spring season of high school sports, obviously, was canceled. With that, we are not assessing fees to any of the people who had initially signed up. So you will see sort of now a red number in your financial statements, which represents the fees that we were expecting to be, to collect for the spring season, which is around ninety thousand. You're seeing a little bit more, we do have, I wouldn't have wiped out the whole encumbrance, but we are still collecting a few fees from other seasons, so that number will go down a little bit. But basically, the negative revenue that you're seeing from not collecting fees, luckily, is being offset by the stipends that we're not paying to the spring coaches. So that's almost a dollar for dollar wash in your financials. Spring sports, as you know, actually is not a, an expensive sport for other supplies and such that need to be purchased. As you know, track is one of the largest sports in the spring, which doesn't really have any equipment. So the, the other savings is minimal. But we are going to take those savings and appropriately purchase some items that are on our need, our need list for equipment, so we're ready and set for next year as we hopefully head into fiscal year twenty-one. The other things on the revenue to point out is that they do, as you know, twice a year, they look at what our school choice or virtual school enrollment is. We must have one less student, so we picked up five thousand dollars in additional chapter seventy revenue, so you'll see that reflected in the statement. As well as, if you follow the news back in, I think it was January, there were several fiscal year nineteen supplemental budgets that Governor Baker passed, and one of those dealt with transportation. And so we did receive last month approximately eighteen thousand in additional fiscal year seventeen, chapter seventy-one revenues that they're having us include in our fiscal year twenty statement. So you'll see an uptick in your chapter seventy-one revenue to reflect that additional eighteen thousand dollars. Overall, the net impact really is just that eighteen, the eighteen plus five, because the, we're going to mitigate the reduction in the sports fees, knowing that that doesn't have a true revenue impact for us. On operating expenses, obviously, with now the closer of school, we know we won't have any more substitute expenses. We will probably will not incur any more custodial overtime. So I have updated your positive solid, positive salary variance to at least two hundred thousand dollars. And as you know, a big chunk of that was based upon things we've been reporting, actually, probably since the beginning of the school year, of post fiscal year twenty budget changes. So we have had some staffing changes, and actually have had some staff leave during this year, and obviously replaced with long-term subs, which there is a savings for, for the district. We still have some budget balance in other categories that either will be encumbered or will be spent. So we'll give you a closer, or a more updated variance at your June meeting. Now that we're sort of back and focusing on the business at hand versus triage, we're looking at things we have to just account for before the school's year is over. So on expenditures, a couple of things. As we, as you know, we shared with you at the meeting last week, we are going to recognize the savings from transportation with the negotiated amendment to our transportation contract. We'll recognize approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand of additional savings in transportation. This makes your transportation line item variance look fairly large, because remember, we are also carrying the use of the regional transportation fund from last year. So that coupled with the savings, looks like a pretty big number on your financials. We've also increased a little bit the projection for savings in active healthcare to about a hundred and fifty thousand. And I think the utility cost is hovering around seventy thousand. I'm expecting that will increase that a little bit. The building, basically, all, your buildings basically were empty for about six weeks, except for a daily walk-through through the custodians. It's hard to anticipate what that savings is going to be, so I'm waiting for those bills to come in. But I do anticipate, obviously, some savings, because we had the building set at the minimum level of heat. So we, obviously, there were savings in that realm, and obviously, we're not using electricity as much. So it's just hard to know what that is, because I've never had a month where there's no one in the building. So I do anticipate a little bit more for that. The other variances that are in your report have been there for a while, so I just include them for your, for your full picture. And I always continue to remind you that the region's fully funding your fiscal year twenty-one capital. So although you see a large number at the bottom, know that five hundred and seventy-five thousand is funding your capital, plus we're using a hundred and seventy-five from E and D, which is part of this number, to fund your fiscal year twenty-one budget. So I think those are important things to keep in mind when you look at the bottom line for right now. In addition, so you have to keep, so regional transportation reimbursement, if you remember, is sort of a, a one-year lag, just like Circuit Breaker, if you're used to Circuit Breaker. So because we're not going to have as much transportation revenue reported on our end-of-the-year report this year, we're going to see a reduction next year in our chapter seventy-one. So all regional school districts have been advised to take the savings from this year and put it in your regional transportation fund. So you have that shortfall that we're going to experience next year accounted for. And then remember, on top of that, we also have the large increase in your transportation to begin with, which we did sort of budget for, but this gives us another safety net for that. Because I will say, I think, although we've gotten to the point where we are almost getting eighty percent of regional transportation reimbursed, I'm not so sure that's what we're going to see going forward. And so it's, this gives us a little extra safety, not, not knowing what that reimbursement rate's going to be for next year. So I will bring forward that to you probably at your June meeting, as we've done in prior years, to transfer some of the current revenue into your regional transportation funds. And as you know, so with the sudden closing in March, that's what we go through, and you sort of look at what items we've budgeted that we still need to purchase. And so we're a little behind on that. But I've reached out to most of the building principals to set up time to go through the budget, see what we had budgeted for, and make sure we execute those purchases. You don't see all those encumbrances yet, because we need to get them into the system. So just know there's still numbers in the variances that we have allocated to purchase something. We just need to move forward with doing that in the next couple of weeks. So by June, hopefully, we should have all that accounted for, and you can really see, sorry, what your bottom line looks like. Any questions on the financial statement?
I have one, I have one quick one. Do you see, do you foresee any issues with completing purchases by the June thirtieth deadline for this year?
No, if we know that it's been, if it's on its way, we, we can, as long as it's been purchased and we know it's on its way, we'll be okay. They're not too tight that it has to necessarily here. By June thirtieth, we have been testing the waters a little bit to see how quickly things are starting to come. We are seeing slower, which is why I'm putting a push on getting all the orders in in the next two weeks, just to sort of protect us from things not being available, and we need to change course or making sure that we're not passing too past that, too much past that June thirtieth deadline. So with the administs back in the buildings this week, we, each building has the ability now to put their purchase orders in, and we'll, we'll ramp everything back up again.
Okay, that, that's great. And before I get, just really quickly, Michael, one other quick thing. I'd like to say thank you, Dawn, I said this in our meeting on Thursday, I believe, but that because we are doing the, because you have thought to do capital through our, us fund the capital, sorry. We are able to continue with that, move forward. Whereas if we had not, projects would have been, been on hold, and.
We probably, we would have missed doing any of our summer projects, because as we know, Sherburne has already postponed their town meeting. So without that, those approvals, you wouldn't have had access to your funds. So it's just the, the financial circumstances that we were in and the planning that we did, it's, we were lucky. Because if you drive by campus, you'll notice that the high school parking lot was just recently paved, and it looks really nice.
Looks great.
Does it look great? Yeah, so we're taking advantage of this opening in time, and I will have to give Chris Hendricks and his staff two thumbs up. The fields look amazing. But again, as I've mentioned to you, because the fields aren't being used, and he doesn't have to work around April vacation, he's been able to do things when they should be done in the fields, and they just look fabulous. So again, I always try to look for the silver linings, and those, those are a couple that we're seeing here on campus.
Yeah, and can you just do a quick explanation about what happens with town meeting being moved with the regional budget?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to do that next, just to make sure no one had any questions. That's okay, on the financials, because before I changed.
Okay, no, let people have their questions. Michael, you had a question?
Yeah, my question is about capital and, and next year. So I can ask it now or I can wait until after you talk about next year, the 112th, whichever you want.
Right, you can go and ask about capital.
Okay, it's, and, and really with respect to the, well, what I noticed is the paving. My, my, my guess is that you were able to do that early and that was originally planned for summer, but that is something you're able to move forward. Is that correct?
We were able to do that, because if you remember in March, you approved your capital projects of 575,000. So we're already funding that money.
But that's something that you would have, if not for the closures, you would have waited until summer?
We, we actually were, we were actually slated to do an April break, the paving. And so we were able to move it up. But other things we will be able to, as you know, you have some floorwork in the building. So we're getting, the guys, the staff started back this week, full floor. So we're assessing how we can incorporate that. And we've been contacting our vendors, because obviously now the calendar usually that we only have in July and August is now expanded to, you know, mid-May and June. So we're trying to make sure we get ourselves scheduled for that, but make sure it falls nicely in with our, our summer cleaning. So we're, we're mapping that whole schedule out to make sure that we take advantage of this, but, you know, about extra seven weeks here, now that we have everyone back. Any questions on the financials, and then I'll just sort of tell you about fiscal year 21?
Anybody? No? All right.
So because regardless of what happened to our town meetings, all regional districts had already been, as I told you in your memo, had been instructed to complete the necessary paperwork to request a 112th budget. So as you know, we can't, we, we survive on the assessments. And if our towns haven't approved those assessments, we really don't have any way to pay our bills. So the way that the Department of Revenue, the Office of Regional Governance and DUCI work with that is that they assess the town's 1/12th of your budget as it was set in fiscal year 20. So the schools are usually fine with that, because if you know, our teachers don't come back until September. So our biggest payroll expense doesn't start yet. So we're really at no harm by having the 1/12th of last year's budget be our, our assessment to the towns for potentially July, August, and hopefully by September. Hopefully, we'll have some town budgets. As you know, Sherburne has already postponed theirs to late summer, early fall. I did speak with Dover today and they're still holding out hope that they can get something done in June, but they're waiting and standing by. But we have, we have this safety net to go to, so that everyone can continue at the, at all the regionals to move forward. It's just not with necessarily the budget that you thought. Now, the process is such that, say, we had a debt payment due, they would take that into account. So there is some flexibility with this and their goal is just to make sure that no one's harmed by this. But it will be a huge undertaking for the state to go and check all these numbers out and approve a 112th budget for all the regions. And then they'll be doing the same thing on the municipality side with a different organization. But we've had already probably about an hour and a half conference call on this and a couple other ones set up in mid-May to make sure we all know how we're doing this. But just know that, that will be undertaken by this office. And once we have those assessed numbers, we'll share you, we'll share them with you. And then we send them out to the towns, because that will be what sets their July and most likely August payment for you. And then we'll play catch-up once the budgets are approved. So something new to learn.
Awesome, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Michael?
Yes, thank you. Michael Jaffe. Thanks, Dawn. Do you, I know nobody has a crystal ball about next year. But kind of knowing what you know now and knowing what may be possible next year, do you have concerns around the budget that we've passed? And, and do you anticipate any particular kind of categories where there's going to be a big aha moment, you know, we're, we're going to need to do some creative work in order to, to meet what may happen? That may be an unfair question, because.
No, no, I mean, we, we've already, we've already been talking about that. So as we, as I just mentioned, there is a, there's a little blip with chapter 71, right? That I talked about, one, we're going to get an unequal reimbursement, because with a shortfall this year and the larger increase next year. But we're going to plan for that by putting saving, or putting monies into the regional transportation funds, so we can make ourselves whole for fiscal year 21. There is a possibility that you built your budget on Governor's chapter 70 cherry sheets. I think most of us believe that that's, that's not going to be where we land. We're going to land below that. But remember, we don't feel that they'll go hopefully below what we're getting right now for fiscal year 20. So the region will have to try to potentially make up that increase that we saw between our, what we're seeing in 20 and what the governor had initially put forward in his budget. You know, seems like not that long ago, but in the third week of January. But that's some of the financial planning that we're going to try to do with some of the savings, I think, that we have now to be, be on top of that. So some one-time purchases that, and that's what I'll be working on to bring to you in June. I think there's some one-time purchases that we have in the fiscal year 21 budget that if are things that I think we could have access to, we'll go ahead and bring them in in fiscal year 20. And I'm not talking huge amounts, but just some way. Because if you do see a decrease in chapter 70, that's a direct responsibility of the region. Because remember, that netted out before we do the assessments. And so any way that I can prepare ourselves, if we do see that decrease, so we don't have a negative impact in 21, that's what we're spending some time to do as I, as I sit down with each of the building principals to see what we can bring forward, to sort of give us a little safety. And then if we don't spend it in 21, it would just fall to the, to your bottom line.
And, and I, I guess you don't, you don't see the, the need or, or maybe even the procedural possibility of saying, you know what, let's, let's, let's rework the, the budgets for next year a bit. So we have some flexibility.
At this point, we haven't been giving any indication, I think, from either of the towns that we need to go back and look at our budget closer. I did have a detailed call today with Dover and they, they feel like they're fine. There's no need to ask any of their departments to alter their budgets at this point in time. I think where some of this is going to fall out is probably when we start building fiscal year 22, because then I think reality will have set in. And that's when I think we're going to see a little bit more, you know, maybe it's not going to be level service, maybe it's going to be something that's your, you know, a little bit less than what your fiscal year 21 budget was because of some of the changes that could impact. Remember, the towns, our towns are about heavily dependent on property taxes, which luckily for our towns, they're not dependent on the state giving them any money. And so as much as we can protect the property taxes, that's where I think we'll be okay. So that's where we're, don't know how that's all going to play out. This is a different kind of situation, right? It's a forced shutdown of the economy, what's going to happen? So those are some of the things we're looking at. But I think we're going to try to hold course for 21. But during 21, I think we're going to be thinking about how we can do things differently, so that if we do need to make some cuts, we strategically know where we can make those cuts without jeopardizing the education of students.
Just one, one final comment. I, I mean, thank you for the great work that you've been doing throughout the process and particularly around being creative for being able to come up with solutions to not to have to go back to the town so much. I, I think this year's town meetings, I don't know how they're going to take place, but however they take place, perhaps there's opportunity to highlight some of that. You've spoken with us about it and, and, and we've spoken, I think, with, with some, some town folks about, you know, funding our own capital. But there, there, there are some terrific things that, that are being done that maybe that will give us some, some good capital, no pun intended, come, you know, fiscal year 22, when there'll be some credibility that, hey, they've really done all they could do creatively to make things work for a very difficult time.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have that opportunity. One thing we still haven't had is the budget hearing either, right? So that's our opportunity where we actually do present our budgets to both towns. Not in detail in Sherburne, but definitely in Dover, there's a full presentation. I don't know exactly how, I think they're still trying to maybe do those virtually, I'm not sure. But that's an opportunity for us to share some of the things we've been doing. But as I can see, we've got most of our finance, our warrant and advisory people on the call with us. So hopefully, they can share some of the things that we've talked about tonight with their groups too. But know that Andrew and I are in constant contact. Like I said, I just had a call today with the town of Dover and we'll probably have a touch point at some point with the town of Sherburne. Also, just to make sure we're on the, the right track. But, you know, just so you know, the two elementary schools probably are not in the position that you guys are and we're probably looking at not being able to do their capital projects this summer. So that's, again, luckily, the numbers fell in our favor and we were able to absorb it at the region, which gave us a lot more flexibility with our timing.
Jade Materazzo from Sherburne Advisory. And if I may, I just, we, we have not had a specific conversation right now on Sherburne Advisory about a second look at the budget, if you will, or anything like that with respect to the school committee. Obviously, it looks like there's, we have suspected that there would be some very, some very substantial positive variances. And it looks like that will in fact be the case. But we have had many conversations about the fact that there are a lot of unknowns, obviously. And Dawn, you alluded to some of this, you know, and one obviously being that we don't know what our COVID-related expenses may be at this point, or, you know, what they may amount to as, you know, collectively as towns. We don't know what the effect on property values will be. I think we can be pretty sure that the economic effect of, you know, the downturn that we're all seeing is going to have an impact on families. So while we certainly appreciate, Michael, that the school committee has been very creative about finding ways to not have to come back to the towns, there is a flip side to that, which is that, that has meant in certain circumstances that, you know, E and D has been reduced, or, you know, what otherwise might have been an excess that would have been returned to the towns has not been returned. And so, you know, it's a little bit of a double-edged sword. You know, there's good and bad that comes with, with, with looking at both sides of that coin. But I do think that it is likely that, you know, when we take, you know, when June comes around and we have a better sense of what the real numbers are, that it's likely, and I can't speak for Sherburne Advisory as a group right now, but I think it is likely that we will be hoping that some of those creative ways of not having to go back to the towns might, might be skipped this year. So that perhaps some more money could go back if there is that excess over, you know, the 5% of E and D that there are, that there likely will be, is what we're guessing. So it's just something to think about for the future. I realize, you know, none of those numbers are, are hard and fast at this point. But, you know, there are, there are two sides to the coin and, and I just ask you to, you know, consider that.
Yeah, absolutely, Jane. You know, and I, I've only looked at first pass at the number, but I've already shared with Andrew that there is probably a potential that there will be a give back in some form to both towns this year, because of, we're already pretty much at our cap of E and D. And even taking into account that we're paying for our own capital and protecting ourselves from transportation next year. We have had some favorable variances that don't even coincide with the pandemic that we're in right now. It's just the nature of where we were with the salaries, as I said, that there, there could be, that we would, we would cap out at our 1, at our 5% and have some turn back for the two towns come the end of this fiscal year.
So thank you, Dawn, for all of that. I really appreciate that. And I'd like to just sort of add that I feel like when the district has been looking at things and taking money from one year and putting it towards expenses that we knew were having the next year, that it's, you're, you're taking a very long-term view, Dawn. And so it's expenses that would be given to the, turned into the town.
Yeah.
Asking the town for the money at some point.
Right.
We're just doing it earlier. And in fact, in some cases, I know that because we've been able to do things sooner, we've actually saved money, like the paving. So that there have been some positives to us.
Yeah.
It means self-funding.
Right. I mean, I think in a way, if we, it's no different than if we would have assessed for that capital, right? The money would still have to come from the town. So we're just assessing and taking the assessments early versus having that to go through the process. So I, I don't feel that anything that we're doing is not saving the town's money.
Okay, thank you. I'd love to be able to move on to the OPEB. Dawn, you talking about that, or was that you, Maggie?
I can introduce it and then I'm going to turn it over to the subcommittee. So, you know, we're, this is a continuous process. But we were saying last week when we were having these meetings, it's actually sort of a nice, healthy way to progress through a new topic for us, is that we've been able to bite it off in pieces and really understand each piece versus trying to cram it through. So our goal for your meeting tonight was to bring forward, the committee, as you know, has to approve an investment policy. And with our agreement to move forward with PARs, they sort of have a built-in investment policy because they contract with Vanguard. So we were able to dual-purpose here and take our, the agreement that we have to sign with Vanguard and it's, and it serves as a dual purpose as the investment policy for the committee. Because if you can see on Schedule B, it's sort of line, it sort of lays out the options that we have. So that in, in fact, sets our investment policy for the region moving forward. So I'll pass it off to Maggie and Judy to just sort of give you a brief summary of some of the calls we had and make you feel comfortable with, with how we're moving forward.
Thank, thank you, Dawn. So first of all, just on behalf of Judy and I, who are your employment, it says Maggie Sharon, sorry for, for the minutes. On behalf of Judy and I, who are your employment benefits subcommittee members, I want to say a huge thank you to Dawn Fattori. A huge thank you to all the personnel at PARs, who've been wonderful and very responsive and very thorough in terms of this new relationship we have working with them as we create an investment fund for our OPEB trust. I, I want to also thank our actuary, whose name remind me, Dawn?
Parker Elmore.
Thank you. Parker, Parker, who was also during the time since we were able to agree to move forward with PARs, has been able to take a look at our agreements, our strategy, and was able to give us some professional opinions on, you know, different choices that we've had, one versus another. We've had a number of calls with the folks at PARs. We also were able to speak with the specific representative from Vanguard. And they were able to talk us through different strategies, obviously, strategies with respect to the state of the market these days and kind of where things are at. You know, in terms of our funding policy is in fact that quite long. And I appreciate probably the two lawyers among us have had the chance to look at it. It's a boilerplate policy. And, and so we're really hoping that we can move forward with this, because this is the policy that they generally use with all of their school districts. And in terms of our choice of PARs, we have, by choosing PARs, moved forward with the Vanguard products. And so you can see from that Schedule B, which is on page 35 of your packet, that really it's a choice in a range that begins at fixed income and ends with a growth strategy. We has, as a subcommittee, are going to recommend that we move forward by making our investment in the growth funds on behalf of the school committee, understanding that the future employment benefit subcommittees will always have control over making that change. And so that's something that our work will be to continue to review and observe and see where these funds are headed if some, for some reason, we want to do something else. In speaking with Parker and in speaking with the strategy guys that we had the calls with at Vanguard, really because the time horizon of this investment is, is, is longer than 30 years, that's what really brings us to the idea that the growth strategy is the way to go. And Judy, I want to just invite you to, to share, is there anything we should add in? Or other, are there things we want to share with the committee?
Yeah, all I wanted, just one thing, which is, we talked to them about, you know, the uncertainty of, of investing. Yeah, all I wanted, just one thing, which is we talked to them about, you know, the uncertainty of, of investing in this environment. And they, and they assured us and that they have looked at the issue and that the growth fund is still the most appropriate for, you know, the kind of investment that we're making.
Yeah. So those calls were really important to us in terms of getting our questions answered. They came highly prepared with, you know, all different kinds of slides and things. We left those meetings feeling pretty confident about their ability to shepherd the process through. And also about, you know, they're clearly set up to do this work on behalf of municipalities. And so that felt really good. We will, what we're talking about in terms of the investment policy will specifically apply to the monies that we set aside in the prior year that will invest on June 3rd with, with PARs. And then when we return to you in June, we'll be asking you to look at the funding policy, which will be our last piece. And that really speaks to like, what's our strategy? Because one of the things in setting up an OPEB fund is you have to, your, your organization has to have a strategy whereby you commit to putting something in that fund every year. And so we'll be coming forward with a proposal for what we feel would be a reasonable thing to do. Given that, you know, especially looking forward, we, we know that times are going to become more austere. And in doing that, we need to be prudent. And also a big, one of the things we talked to Parker about was like, how is it that this work will impact our discount rate going forward? And the, obviously the creation of the fund, the, you know, changing the cost share for the employees' healthcare. And then choosing the growth fund. And then also what our funding policy is, are all the pieces that will ultimately impact that discount rate. So we're happy to take your questions and either Judy or I, or probably more likely Dawn, will, will have answers for them.
So just to clarify, this is like a one-time, because this is when we're first setting this up. It's a one-time adoption of the investment policy with the caveat that the subcommittee then on whatever timeframe they decide can change what fund, but it will always be one of those four funds that's listed. And therefore that's why it's your investment policy that we're asking you to accept.
Any questions?
Michael had a question.
Oh, sorry, Michael.
What, what is the, the frequency that's anticipated for the, the subcommittee to reevaluate? Not necessarily change anything, but to, to take a look and reevaluate or potentially changing or keeping, is that an annual?
Oh yeah, probably not, probably even a little bit more than an annual. PARs give us quarterly reports. That's part of their just normal operation. So my guess is that that subcommittee would meet in some form, probably on a quarterly basis, just to check in. Not very long meeting, but just as sort of, you know, actually now we know we can do Zoom. And it would just be easy just to do a Zoom meeting, just to check in once we get those quarterly reports. And, you know, we'd meet with our rep from PARs and just probably do a quick check to see where we stand. I don't see us flipping back and forth a lot because one of the goals is to stay right, stay where you are and hold there. But I think it's prudent upon us to probably have at least a quarterly meeting of that group, just to discuss things.
And one of the other things that we can have, if the committee has an interest in that, is the representatives from PARs are very happy to come out and share more information with you, even if you want that annually. That's definitely something that's in their wheelhouse and something that we can decide, especially if the community has a lot of curiosity about how that fund's being managed.
Second, I, I, I mean, I'm really, I'm torn. I, I think it's, it's really important to have, to have this funded and to have the fund set aside. I'm quite concerned about the timing and the market. This is, is my unofficial part-time job is, is investing and reallocating. And I, I, I think it's the right call on the growth strategy as well, particularly with the, the window. But I'm just, I'm, I'm so concerned that, you know, the money goes in on the 3rd and then three days later, we, we have a cumulative 40% drop because we are in such a volatile. And we just saw that. And there's, there's no, I understand there's no way to crystal ball, but we're just in such a state of volatility. And, and I guess my wish is that we started out on a high point rather than on a 20 or 30 or 40% down point, which ultimately that would get made up, but you're just making your gun from a low point.
I, I mean, I, I think to your point, I believe we do have to put the money into the investment by the end of the fiscal year. Is that correct, Dawn?
We, we could put it into a money market, it could go into a holding account. So as we get closer to June, if there seems to still be some major volatility, we can reach back out. We, we don't have to put it into the, the funds right away. We just have to get it deposited so it's sitting in US Bank with, with PARs. So that's what we're, and that's why we were so careful in the timeline, because you have to wait 90 days. There's 90 day holding period, you know, once you guys adopted that. So we can touch base, they didn't have any concern because we, you know, Judy and I and Maggie asked those exact same questions. When you're looking at something over 30 years, a week or two here, and he said it's really not going to make a difference.
Can I just?
Judy, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, you know, if you, if you look at the, what happened to the market from like 1929 to 1959, that's, that's the timeframe. We're not human. The school district isn't a human being. It's an, it's an entity. And so, you know, this is a fund that's going to be there for a long, long time. And so whether we put it in on June 3rd or June 30th, you know, and there's a, you know, some kind of a crash, you know, after we put it in, it's a, it's a long-term investment, obviously.
And I, I fully appreciate that. And, and I, I think long-term, even if you invested the money on the 3rd in growth, you'd do fine. But the, the difference is if you use the 40% dip, you're starting 40% down and, and then regaining that rather than starting, you know, higher and then growing higher. And, and so I guess the only thing I would, I would ask, and I'm in, in, in support of, of the investment policy. I'm also in support of you guys determining, you know, when and where that's going to be. But I would request that you, you do kind of take a look at the, at the volatility index. And maybe decide, you know, we're going to wait a month. We're going to put it in the market and then we'll, we'll just transfer it over to the, you know, to the blended equities and fixed income.
Yeah. And the Vanguard representative that we spoke with, I mean, if they had any concerns, they would advise us to do something different than at this junction when we spoke with them last week, obviously, right? We were talking as though every, how we are now, and they didn't see any issues. But we can definitely take that into consideration. And before we move forward on June 3rd, have another check in with them to see if they continue to have the same recommendation for us.
Okay, thank, thank you. So now, Dawn, do we just need to vote for the plan?
The invest, so the investment policy. So the document that is in your packet is referring to in ours, investment policy. So the regional subcommittee is accepting the, approving the investment policy for the OPEB trust fund.
So do I hear a motion to approve the investment policy for the OPEB trust fund?
Lynn Collins, so moved.
Thank you, Lynn. Do I hear a second?
Maggie Sharon, second.
Thank you, Maggie. We'll vote Maggie.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Michael.
Michael Jaffe, yes, sorry.
Thanks, it's all right. Lynn.
Lynn Collins, yes.
Kate.
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy.
Judy Miller, yes.
And, and I say, Anne Hovey also, yes. Thank you so much. I know that you guys have had tons of meetings and have researched this really thoroughly. So thank you, thank you.
And we look forward to the last piece in June with the funding policy, which we, we have some ideas of what we're doing. We just think of put it down in a nice paragraph for you. And that'll, that'll be the final check mark for this to-do list. So thank you.
And I just wanted to also say thank you, Anne, and thank you so much to the whole committee. Thank you to Claire Graham, if she's out there, because she was a big proponent of us getting this work done. And I feel very hopeful that with this step, we have done another step in terms of ensuring that our commitment to our retirees is something that will stand the test of time. Because I do think, especially in the middle of the health crisis, that making sure that employee benefits and retiree health benefits especially are something that we can guarantee to all of our, all of our retired faculty and all of the good folks sitting here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Maggie. That was well said. All right, we're moving on. We've got to request, that we have to vote on the request for co-ops for the varsity JV boys ice hockey team. Did anybody have any questions or thoughts? We're good to move? All right. I think, I think we need to do them separately because one is a renewal and then one is a new formation. That's all right. All right. So do I hear a motion to approve the renewal of the cooperative boys varsity ice hockey team with Weston High School for the 2021 and 2122 seasons?
So moved. Maggie Sharon.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Lynn Collins.
Thanks, Lynn. All right. Discussion now? All right, we'll vote Maggie.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Michael.
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn.
Lynn Collins, yes.
Kate.
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy.
Judy Miller, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Do I hear a motion to approve the preparation of a cooperative boys JV ice hockey team with Weston High School for the 2021 and 2122 seasons?
So moved. Judy Miller.
Thanks, Judy. A second?
Second, Michael Jaffe.
Thanks. All right, discussion now. Vote, Maggie.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Michael.
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn.
Lynn Collins, yes.
Kate.
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy.
Judy Miller, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you. Um, we also have girls' ice hockey. Do I hear a motion to approve the cooperative girls' ice hockey team with Hopkinton High School and maybe other schools for the 2021 season?
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Oh, Andrew? Yes, Andrew?
I don't think you're voting to approve the team itself because it's already in existence. I think you already voted to approve that. You're just approving the reformation so that Hopkinton is going to be the lead
host.
team.
Oh, okay. I thought we had to just approve them every year. I thought that was like, that's why we're doing the.
Go ahead.
Oh, so John? Yeah, clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Hovey. Because of the number of participants that Hopkinton has had over the last few years and our numbers have dropped, we clearly still want to make sure that we're providing an extracurricular opportunity for Dover Sherburne women to play ice hockey. But Hopkinton is going to be taking over as like the lead school, similar to our gymnastics program through Mads. Midfield is the lead school, but we are a continuing partner. We had been in charge, so it had been Dover Sherburne slash Hopkinton Hockey. Now it's going to be Hopkinton, Dover Sherburne and maybe like it just, it does make sense to shift it. The great news is our women will still have an opportunity, any woman at Dover Sherburne will still have an opportunity to play ice hockey. But they will take over the leadership of the program.
But John, do they, didn't we, didn't the school committee approve this cooperative team last year?
That's correct, yes.
And it's a two-year approval. So next year we would be back if it continues. This is really just about reformation.
Okay, got it. All right, my mistake. Thank you. All right, so let me reword the motion. Do I hear a motion to approve the reformation of the cooperative girls varsity ice hockey team with Hopkinton High School as the leads, as lead school for the 2021 season?
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Second?
Lynn Collins, second.
I'm going to let Kate do it. Kate Potter. Yay! She seconded it. We'll do the vote. Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you. No, wait, we're not done.
Not done.
No. So we've got the proposed changes to the 2021 student handbook. This is a first read. John and Scott, did you, do you have things you want to highlight? I know you showed in the packet, it was actually very thorough. Thank you. And I really appreciated the bolding and highlighting. It made it so much easier. So thank you. I appreciate.
Ms. Hovey, I just have a couple that I'll go through, but I want to give kudos to Anne Keegan for that highlighting and bold. She deserves full credit for that. All right, let me just pull those up. So a couple of them are just related. Can everyone still hear me? Okay. Are just related to clarifying because of our new start times, so the proposed change. Typically, we say we want parents to or guardians to contact us before 8 o'clock. Now we're just saying before 9 o'clock. Just in the case of letting us know their, their son or daughter is going to be out because of illness or, or whatever reason. The second one that is bold just talks about students need to arrive by 9:45. And we just wanted to give some clarification around this. We had some misunderstandings this year and, and fair enough, it wasn't spelled out clearly that in order to be a participant in a sport or to attend an event. So let's say if you came in at 1 o'clock at the afternoon and you then wanted to go to the boys' basketball game at night, you would have needed to have prior permission. And as long as we got a phone call from a parent or a guardian, we almost always approve it. It's just communication. We just want to make sure that mom or dad knew that their son or daughter was out of school. So it's just clarifying that in order for you to not only be a participant in a sport, but also to be a spectator to the sport. The other is just some clarification around detention, just, you know, saying that we'll give you 24 hours notice, proper arrangements. You can also serve it on that day. It's just reiterating that the expectation as you take care of this. I will say, Ms. Cruz and Ms. Keegan are very flexible. Kids come down on a regular basis. They'll say something in my work schedule changed, or I have a family piece and I change it to Thursday instead of Wednesday. And unless it's a continuous pattern of students doing this, we always have said yes. Because the, the priority is that they do take care of this, but it doesn't always have to be that day or the next day. Another piece that is just kind of a change just because of our later start time. We are going to have, office detentions are going to begin shortly after the flex block begins and then continue in a little bit after school. And the purpose of doing that was to also enable students to be able to still participate in their extracurriculars by leaving the bus or whatever the case may be, or also to get the extra help. It still will be in place that if a student needed to get extra help in English and they had an office detention for tardies, they could go to that English teacher, get the extra help and simply just get a pass saying they were with the English teacher and we would credit them with that. The only time we don't for office detentions is if it were something that involves skipping school or some sort of really negative behavior. If it's just tardiness, we're a lot more flexible. Office detention was just specified a little bit as to, you know, what we do expect for that. So there were some changes there. We did have some changes around students moving out of the district. We just wanted to make sure it's aligned with what your policy is in central office. We did add a communication guideline, just, we sort of clarified it. And we really do think at the high school level that, you know, they're advocating for themselves is important. We understand that can't always be how it happens, but we do want that to be the first step. We want there to be the student reaching out to the teacher and then subsequently just to follow that procedure, that protocol. So instead of the parent directly calling the assistant headmaster, that they do go through the teacher to get that information. And whenever possible, we do want the student to be present at the meeting. A lot of times that can clear up any misconceptions. It can help sort of if there needs to be a repairing of the relationship with the teacher and the student. That can be really positive. This is simply to make as some clarification for protocol. Always exceptions. And for example, if it's something pertaining to a teacher, concerning behavior of a teacher, obviously. concerning behavior of a teacher, obviously, the parent's going to contact administration. I mean, that just goes without saying. This would just be more on the lines of student is struggling in a class, we want them to go to the teacher and then subsequently their parent can get involved or the, the student can go to the department chair. And what we have found in a lot of these cases, not everyone, but a lot of them is plans develop and reports develop and understandings and clarification happens. But there's always going to be that opportunity if a parent wants to continue to take it up different stages, we just wanted to outline it and be a little more specific. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, that was actually really helpful. I really appreciated the clarification around flex block. I think, I know that there's a lot going on next year with the change in start time, so. Does people have any questions? We will have time also to, for a brief discussion, the next, we won't vote this meeting, we're going to vote next meeting. But any, Mr. Jaffe?
So I, I sent through a, a slight suggested modification. I don't even know if it's something that, that warrants discussion or maybe it can just get sent on and, and considered since this is a first read.
All right, yes, let's do that.
Okay, and, and then one other thing I just noticed, maybe that can go together with that email is maybe capitalize on the communications guidelines, capitalize the involvement just to make it consistent.
Yep.
Sorry, I'm just on that page.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, so I will pass on Mr. Jaffe's suggestion onto you, Ms. Dr. Kio, and then you can pass that on, okay, thanks, yes, Maggie?
I, I just want to say, I read through the changes. I want to say thank you, thank you to Ms. Keegan for going through them with the, with the highlighter, it was super helpful. And also, thank you for the clar, I, I just think that they add some nice clarity for families. We had a few families that reached out with questions in the handbook this year and I really appreciate your being able to respond to that in the annual review. And I, thank you, that makes our job easier, so really appreciate it.
One thing that I should point out, because I know there was some concern too with what took place at the very beginning of the year is respecting the, the rock. And there was some questions around that. And, you know, my feeling is if both males and females could paint the rock, I'm perfectly fine with that, I have no issues with that. I just want to ensure that all participants follow the same line of communication that our students have been following in the past so that everyone knows if someone's going to participate, here's why and here's what we're going to do. So I just, I thought that was important to just note too that it doesn't really have to be a handbook change because there's no specific language in there saying that it's a gender-only, female-only rock. It just has been what our tradition has been. And honestly, I'm open to anybody and everybody from the student body doing it, as long as they're doing it in a positive manner that is benefiting the whole class.
Thank you, I think that makes sense. And I also appreciate then several times in your explanations, you were talking about how there is flexibility. Things are in the handbook, but a lot of times it said, it doesn't say must, it says will or you should or ought to, whatever it is. And so I know that you try to allow flexibility based on the situation and I appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we have great kids and, and there's just a lot of things that come up in different circumstances. So please know that I, I understand that.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Kellert, do you have anything you'd like?
I, we just had three adds to our handbook. One is an inclusion of the mastery rubrics for grading in special subjects. And they're, they're going to continue piloting that, it's been received very well and it's, it's grown through the year. And also world language is going to be developing their own rubrics. With the FLESS students coming in, it, it seems appropriate that they would go to a grading system that would be on a proficiency basis. The other piece that we really like teachers, it was well received by everyone, our school council and teachers alike, and that would be the homework guidelines that we've included. And it, it is, there are a number of school districts that have tweaked this in, in its getting to us. And we're really excited about it because it lays out what homework is about. It reduces the amount of time kid, students are expected to do homework by the grade level. And that is a recommendation from a national teacher group. And it also, you know, teachers' responsibilities, students' responsibilities, parents', expectations we have for parents to help with, with their students' work. So we're really excited about that. And the last piece that we are adding is at the end of our handbook would be the guidelines and procedures and guidelines for Chromebooks as we move to the one-to-one initiative. I will say that I'm, I was looking at it earlier today and on the second to last page is a mention of Flipgrid. We have stopped using Flipgrid, so I would, I think it's near the bottom of that second to last page. I would eliminate that from that section just because of security concerns with student information.
All right, that's fun, that, that can be updated for next time when we do vote on it. That's good, and I have to say that you, you only have three items, but they're three huge.
Oh, they're, they're absolutely, I, I did not, I did not, we did move all the times in our handbook to reflect the new start time, but it was moved up the accordingly, you know, by the, I think it's 50, 55 minutes. So I didn't, I didn't think that warranted forwarding those on, I think John's were a little more substantive.
Okay, thanks, did anybody have questions? Comments, Maggie, oh, sorry, I know that Maggie first, sorry.
Just, I want to say thank you so much about the homework. I thought that was a really thoughtful and well-done addition. I think that'll be helpful for middle school parents. I have a specific question about the item, it's on page 50 of the packet anyway, regarding when students have to pay for the Chromebook. I was under the impression that families were going to be offered a low-cost insurance policy that would cover this. I'm a little bit worried that we put these Chromebooks in the hands of 11-year-old children because, you know, they do things that are outside the manufacturer's warranty. How, how are we going to help those families to not have careless children who end up with big bills?
I don't think we can avoid having careless children. I think that's just the nature of kids this age. I, if they get the insurance, my understanding is, then that would be covered.
Okay.
That's my understanding, and this was done, I was working with Mr. Rataco.
Yes, yeah, so I just want to make sure that when families receive these Chromebooks, because that is like buried way down at the end. I just want to just give advice to be very clear with families about what this looks like if they choose not to take the very low-cost insurance.
Yes, I would agree, it, it, I would, that would, I would equate to the DC trip this year where, where we, when we canceled, we had the situation for a while where they were only going to get a certain percentage, less a certain percentage back. So this would be similar to that, is you, insurance is, it, it can, it's, there's a cost, but if you need it, there's a reason there's a cost.
Right. Okay, thank you, okay, thanks, Ms. McCoy?
Thank you, I just wanted to mention that this is an important reminder to me that the policies that Lynn and her committee worked so hard on updating and that you all approved last week, we need to make sure that those policies are updated in all of your handbooks. So I just jotted a note down to ask Cheryl to make sure those policies come back out to the principals. Obviously, they've already been approved by the, the school committees, so you wouldn't have to reapprove them. I just want to make sure that they end up in the final copy. Thank you.
Thank you, actually, really good point, I hadn't thought about that, thank you for catching that. Any other questions? Okay, so we will vote on those next, on the handbooks in June. Let's move to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes for December 5th and March 3rd and April 28th?
Michael Jaffe, so moved.
Do I hear a second? Thank you, people so hesitant to second today. We'll do the vote, Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Really quickly, I hate to say this, but before we adjourn, members of the RC have indicated that we would really like to have a workshop to discuss committee norms and leveraging what we've learned over the past six weeks into better performance in the future, given the current state of affairs. I just want to really quickly check to see if committee members are interested in that and if so, then we'll take the step forward. Yeah, Judy?
I think that's a fabulous idea, I think we talked about it a bit. I, I, I think it's terrific, I'd like to see us be able to meet as a group and talk about norms. You know, we can do part of it even without wasting the time of, you know, administrators, but we also would be good to set goals. Like, we, didn't we do that last, last year around this time and that was really helpful?
Yeah, we did during the summer.
Yeah, yeah, I just think it, for a million reasons, it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think, oh, sorry, Maggie?
I, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it and certainly make myself available. I'm, is, is this something that, I, I know the, the last time we just did it internally, is this something where we can welcome in our college, you know, the, the school administration? And also, I just want to keep us in mind that there is an election coming in June. So I just don't want you guys, us to get, you guys, us to get too far down the road of setting norms and then should we have new folks joining us or replacing us? I, I don't want to bother the other rest of us if that means we have to do it over again. But I'm certainly always, I love, I love norms.
I, that makes sense, I, just a little bit of background, this actually came from Kate, thank you, Kate. In part because of things that have arisen just from having Zoom calls and just sort of how we can interact and things that we can and can't seem to get done as a committee. So I, I don't foresee it necessarily as being a lengthy meeting. Fortunately, Zoom, quick Zoom meetings are good and they're easy, not wasting, you know, the 20 minutes to drive there and back. So I, I think that that was the, the thought. But that's why I wanted to check with people to see if they thought that would make sense. And if so, then we'll try to get something scheduled quickly. And we'll try to get an agenda so everyone can share what their questions are about how we operate differently now, given the current set of circumstances. And, and possibly ask our other committees and do a joint potentially, I don't know, we'll have to see. Okay, all right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, let's say thank you for all, thank you to all of you for the meeting and also thank you to our teachers, we love and appreciate you, yay. I guess heart, all right? All right, thank you all and I will see you all soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.